Are they gonna walk him to his car? Or his attorney's gonna walk him to his car?
Oh, I don't know.
I hope so.
Why?
Well, I came down here to do that.
To walk him to his car?
Yeah, make sure he gets to his car seat.
Please take your seats and let's get on with the meeting. We're moving on to item nine, which is a report on a recent arrest. Mr. Phelps, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a request of Councilmember Whitaker, janitorial review of recent arrests, and just ask Chief Hughes to start us off with the overview of the facts involving this, and return it back to you and to pleasure the council.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, Dan Hughes, your deputy chief. As I spoke to Mr. Whitaker last night, I will not be talking about the elements of the case or the arrest because they are ongoing criminum, case pending. However, I will provide an overview of what I believe Mr. Whitaker has asked for. On January 18th, there was a protest in our city. About four hours later, that turned into and was declared as an unlawful assembly. There were ten individuals who were arrested for failure to disperse. Three other individuals were arrested for vandalism of public and private property. One was also in possession of a wrist rocket, slingshot, and marbles. One was arrested for an assault, and one was arrested for a robbery, not related to the protest, but there were protesters who committed a robbery in one of our local grocery stores afterwards. The actions of these individuals and others were documented, and the documentation was forwarded to the district attorney's office. The district attorney's office filed charges on all of these individuals, as well as one more, based upon the review of their conduct, which was mostly captured on video and tape recordings. The remaining suspect, which was Mr. Allen Redkey, who had ran several times from the police on the 18th, was not arrested on the 18th, and therefore, that case was submitted to the district attorney's office, and they reviewed that conduct. On March 20th, Superior Court Judge Donald Gaffney issued an arrest warrant for Mr. Redkey in the amount of $7,500. The detective assigned to that case made efforts to locate and arrest Mr. Redkey locally, and he was unable to locate him. We also received information that Mr. Redkey was aware that he had an arrest warrant, but he was not going to turn himself in. On May 7th, the handling detective learned that Mr. Redkey would be in the city of Pasadena. The detective contacted our directed enforcement team, which in part of their responsibility is to assist detectives with open cases where there are outstanding ones for people. Two supervisors and four detectives went to Pasadena. They followed their protocol by notifying the Pasadena Police Department that we would be in their city while we were doing. And then they contacted and arrested Mr. Redkey with a warrant he had for his arrest. There were no issues with the arrest, and the detectives were in Pasadena for about 15 minutes. I believe Councilmember Whitaker had asked me if it was a normal practice to make arrests for misdemeanors outside the city, and that answer is simple: yes, it is. I think it's important for our community to know that they are a victim of crime in our community, whether it's a felony or it is a misdemeanor. And the suspect is known and a warrant has been issued for that person's arrest, it is going to be our obligation-
Who's the victim?
-to try to locate and arrest that person. And we will vigorously pursue all leads to arrest that person. We were also mandated by a key decision called Cerner versus Superior Court, which is a decision that mandates police departments and police officers to execute arrest warrants in a timely manner. Usually, we have to fill out some type of documentation for the court if that arrest warrant is not completed within the year. I also spoke to several Orange County police chiefs just to inquire if our practice here at the Fulton Police Department differed at all regarding going to other jurisdictions to make arrests on open cases, including misdemeanors. And it was unanimous that this practice is the same as their practice. It's something that is just part of the rule of policing. I also did some analysis on arrests that were made outside the city by our police department in the past five years. Those arrests from the outside of the police department have included 631 felony arrests and 635 misdemeanor arrests outside our city borders. If you have any other questions you would have, very good.
Ask who the victim is.
Okay, council members, do we have any questions of Chief Hughes? Mr. Whitaker?
I should probably wait to hear from the public, but I guess my core question, Chief, is... Oh, and in fact, let me step back. The reason this was agendized was several days before our last council meeting, I was aware that there were concerns about, more fiscal-related concerns about the use of six officers on such a long transit to pick up a misdemeanor arrest. And I made inquiries internally about that, and I was asking if I could hear the reasoning behind such. And I didn't really receive any answers prior to the last council meeting. That's why I agendized the item. So I have yet to be briefed on this item, and this Chief Hughes and I spoke just last night. Apparently, there is documentation that he would be willing to share with me, and I will take you up on that following this meeting. But my question to you, Chief, really is that the post-incident report or study was packaged and forwarded to the district attorney, and they independently made these decisions for arrest, or were there recommendations that accompanied them?
Well, I think we never use a separate case for filing. There are recommendations based upon what we have witnessed, so we document that information. We provide an oral presentation to that, as well as show evidence that we believe shows proof of the probable cause for the arrest, and then they make the decision whether or not they're gonna file charges or not.
Well, I appreciate that, and where I'm at on this is wanting to understand, because we on the council get held accountable for policy decisions by the city, even though largely, we leave it to you to run the police department and try to provide as little interference as necessary, at least certainly that's my goal. However, in this case, the very protest that was occurring was a protest against your department and against actions of members of the Fullerton Police Department. And so, the after-incident review and recommendations for arrest, it would seem to me, as a policymaker, it could be a very loaded situation to do that, and it could appear as though your command staff decisions might be loaded with a certain amount of animosity over the fact that this protest was even happening against your department or against... And so, to me, that was my concern, and that's why I felt like I needed to get some open answers for the public. I think they're entitled to some of those.
Well, sir, and I appreciate that. I would just say that, as you're aware, because you attended some of those protests that were in front of the police department for months and months and months, for probably over 10 months, there were protests in front of the police department. And there were no arrests that were made during those protests. Matter of fact, we did everything we possibly could to ensure that they had the ability to express their first movement rights. We blocked intersections, we provided chairs at times, we provided water, we provided ice for people who had ice chests that needed to cool off water. And so, we had done everything possible to ensure that they could peacefully protest. And I think the difference between this one is, and what was interesting about this one is, this was an incident that those people who had protested in our city, many, many members of our community, were ones that we had actually built relationships with throughout those months. They were the same similar individuals who were calling us and telling us that there were going to be a large group of individuals who were coming to the city, that all they want to do is disrupt your community, that they're going to commit violence against the police, they're gonna try to vandalize the police department, which in fact did take place, they were going to vandalize businesses in our downtown area, which did in fact take place, and that they were trying to look for some confrontation. And so, we certainly will do everything we can when it comes to protest, ensure that they have a right to do so. That's part of my responsibility as a police chief, to allow for that. Even when people disagree with my decisions, I fully understand that. So they have a right to protest. They can conduct themselves in a shameful manner, they can conduct themselves in a vulgar manner, that's not my issue. But they cannot conduct themselves in an unlawful manner. And so, sir, when we're talking about the protection of our community in the city of Fullerton, even if it has to do with the Fuller Police Department, I have an obligation to ensure that our community is safe. And so, I don't know what suggestion you would have, if we're involved in it, is who would be that person who would come in and make that decision whether or not action needs to be taken? But I will tell you, from my understanding, my role as the police chief in this city is my responsibility to ensure that this community is safe, and that's the action that I took that day.
Safe from what?
Safe from what? Who did anything unsafe? That's bullshit!
This is the opportunity to counsel to ask questions.
One additional clarification. You said that at some point, the protest became an unlawful assembly. I wasn't there, I wasn't present that day, although I did catch a few minutes of it with the online streaming that was occurring. And from what I saw, the portions that I saw, it was all peaceful, I didn't see anything that rose to the level probably of meaning to crack down on it. But how was that communicated? What happened? Who made the determination that this protest was now an unlawful assembly? That would help me to understand.
Ultimately, I'm the one that makes that decision. And I made that decision based upon my observations, based upon the information received from people in the field. And I understand you weren't there, I know that our mayor was there, and our city manager was there, I believe Congressman Seaborn was there, and we also received a number of 911 calls from our community members that believed that they were being attacked. And we had roads that were being closed, we had community members who were not allowed to freely travel throughout our community, that vehicles were being blocked, there were cardboards that were being placed over the windows so the people could not see as they were driving, there were being blocked intersections, not allowing vehicles to go through. We would have vehicles needing inferior safety, having to cross over the center barriers to go over in different directions. We had businesses calling, save their businesses who were being spray painted, that they were being, chairs being thrown at them. All of those are pretty good indicators, certainly that's not a peaceful protest. When you take over the intersection, you take barricades that were put up simply to allow the protest to have freedom to walk across our streets, so they wouldn't have to wait for the streetlights, and they take those, vandalize them, move them throughout our community, and block intersections, would not allow other people to freely travel. So, based upon the totality, I believed it was an unlawful assembly. We documented it, we took most of those videotapes that you talked about, the live streams, with part of the presentation in district attorney's office, a number of them looked at it, and they also concurred with my belief that it was an unlawful assembly. Therefore, they filed charges on people who failed to disperse when they were ordered to do so.
Well, my concerns, even in bringing this forward this evening, are to deescalate what's going on, and I'm only concerned that policy-wise, we may be headed in the other direction, potentially. And so, that was my concern. One final question. On an average weekday, your force in the city, how many officers would be outside the city at any given time? And I understand that'll vary, but as a running average, just how many officers would be doing operations outside of our city?
I don't have that information for you, I will tell you that. In terms of the officers who provide those services, they are officers who are not in a patrol function. Their function is to follow up on cases, to make arrests for people who have arrest warrants on Fullerton cases. And so, when you talk about misdemeanor cases, those misdemeanor cases involve domestic violence, assaults, sexual assaults, some burglaries, vandalism, so the misdemeanor involves a number of different items. And so, I can understand why somebody who isn't a victim of one of those things, and there's a suspect that is one of that, why? You might not understand why there's a need to follow up on that, but I believe it is our role to do that. Again, as long as I'm your police chief, we are gonna vehemently go after people who violate the law here in the city of Fullerton.
All right, I'll wait for more clarification on that, as far as the deployment of officers. Are there any other questions from any of the other council members? Okay, hearing none, I will open this up for public comment. And we have the first speaker, please.
Jerry Levinson. Please Chief Hughes, I only wish you were one-third as tough as you were in those demonstrations, as you were in the men that killed-
Please direct your comments to the council, not to-
I can look at him, sir. You can't tell me where to put my head, sir.
Well, but you're not directing your comments to us. Look at it if you like, but please direct your comments to us.
Well, I will say again, I'll look at you and I'll say my comments as I... It's my three minutes, sir. Please don't interrupt me again.
Five minutes. Five minutes. State law!
I wish you were only, Mr. Please Chief Hughes, half as tough as you were in those demonstrations with your own men, who murdered somebody who you yourself said, in this chamber, was innocent of all charges.
You're alarmed. Excuse me, why is there interruption from the- Where is the forum for an officer of the law?
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Levinson, please continue. You will-
I'll have more time, because we've been arguing twice.
Please, no one make comments, and let's let him speak what he wants to say, and let's all kind of respect that.
Take your own advice as well.
Come on.
I have some more time, please.
You're the one who interrupted-
Mr. Levinson, why don't you start from the top, start anew, and we'll give you time from anew, all right?
I appreciate that.
Look, please, let's not interrupt his comments, all right?
There are a number of things that the chief failed to address this evening. He tried to explain why they did what they did. He didn't explain why a nonviolent misdemeanor, failure to disperse charge, needed six officers and several vehicles to go all the way up to Pasadena in rush hour traffic, and spend close to half a day going back and forth. It might have taken a half an hour to arrest them, but it certainly didn't take a half an hour to go to Pasadena in midday traffic and midweek traffic and go back. So he wasted a half a day of six officers, that's three full-time people of a staff that he routinely states is way understaffed, leaving us short-changed, because we're always short-changed according to the chief. So we were short-changed by additional six officers. I don't understand that. You said you couldn't find him. I see this man, I don't know him, I see A.J. all the time, and I don't even know the man. I see him all the time, it seems like every time I go out to downtown, he's around. And yet, from March 20th to May 7th, you never found him? Maybe it had something to do with the fact that that day was another police protest, and maybe the chief was not happy that the idea of talking about the unfortunate, not guilty verdict of both Mr. Ramos, I don't call them police, the Mr. Ramos, or Ramos in Cincinnati, maybe he wasn't happy about that. It certainly seems like a total waste of money. He still hasn't said how much money it cost the city to make this nonviolent misdemeanor guy be arrested, and then immediately let go. I mean, that, you know, he was gone, he was arrested and gone, out of custody in about three minutes, but he spent a half a day of six, half a day of six full officers and two or three police cars. To me, that's just poor policing, sir. That's a poor decision. That was your decision. I hope that, oh God, you don't make another poor decision like that, because that was a very poor decision. Again, you always talk about understaffed, understaffed, yet you spent six police officers there. You always talk about the water you bring out. Well, I heard some other things, that when those people were arrested, that your man taunted while they're arrested, and said, "Not guilty, not guilty," and smiled. Is that the professionalism you teach them? I happen to know a woman, because I know a woman. She went into your police department that day, she was a peaceful protester, she asked to use the taxpayer-funded Fullerton Police Department bathroom, one of the bathrooms. And the two officers said to her, "Are you protesting?" And she says, "Yes, I'm a peaceful protester." They said, "Kid, take a hike." And that woman just got had serious surgery three days before. Any fool could have seen that she was hurting, and that's the kind of treatment. So you can give your propaganda all you want, but I know that police officers, day in and day out, treat people poorly. Thank you.
I've never heard a council member admonish people from coming from another city to a city council.
Would you please give us your name, sir?
My name? First, I'd like to thank councilmember Whitaker for bringing this agenda. My name is Tony Brandenburg, went to school at Troy High School. I now live in the city of Cerro Madre, two blocks east of the city of Pasadena. I'm confused. I'm not sure if I should be calling the Fullerton Police Department now, that their services have been offered in my city. On May 7th, there was a dinner hosted by the Pasadena Educational Foundation. My wife and I planned a small informational pack picket to notify participants of the way children with autism are treated in Pasadena schools, and to urge the city of Pasadena to revisit their city plan to include people with disabilities. By small picket, I mean less than five people. I dropped my wife off at the corner across from the Pasadena Police Station, it's right behind it, near City Hall, with two gentlemen who were empathetic enough to donate their Monday to help us distribute flyers and the whole picket signs. In the 10 minutes it took me to park my car and walk back, the three of them were swarmed by a group of undercover Fullerton police officers, and one was taken away. Not only were these officers 35 miles outside of the city of Fullerton, they were also outside of Orange County, and were now in Los Angeles County. Were they lost?
More yes.
Probably not. They had done this to arrest a man on a warrant for an event that was victimless, he failed to disperse from a demonstration in January. Why Pasadena? Why a picket that I organized? What did my family do to earn this high honor from your city? Why were we so special that the Fullerton Police Department is monitoring our online activity? Apparently, some members of the Fullerton Police Department get to have a day that might look like this: log onto Facebook, poke around for a while, investigating what is going on in the lives of United States citizens, do it on the clock, it's paid for by the taxpayers. Then, they get to get one of three taxpayer-funded police vehicles, and drive 35 miles on taxpayer gas to Pasadena, early enough to miss rush hour. Who knows, maybe nearly enough time to grab a bite to eat on a taxpayer dime. If not, write a receipt off, what the hell is deductible? Maybe chat them in the car, send a couple of texts to the guys in the other cars, play on the walkie-talkies, I don't know. Maybe check in one more time to see if the guest of honor's Facebook is indicating that he'll be coming to the surprise party. We would hate for him to miss that.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not finished. At around 5:30-
Sorry, you've had your five minutes.
Three minutes!
I've sat here for four hours-
It should be five minutes.
And I was very, very medication-
It should be five minutes.
At around 5:30-
So you got another minute and a half.
If I could, it's, no, it's fine. It's fine. The regular news is three, three minutes. Public hearing is five.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have a debate between the city council while the president and the mayor Trumps-
This is unbelievable. I've never been to a city council meeting where a member of the public's treated this way.
Disgusting.
I'm a school teacher. I teach at a public school. Is this how you treat your teachers? At around 5:30, they picked up the guest of honor and cupped him, and then they sat in traffic for a couple more hours. All paid for, totally legitimate, and all in the light of duty. And the people in Fullerton paid for it. I wanna work in your city. I'm good at wasting time and money. Sign me up. Fullerton PD could have faxed the arrest warrant over to Pasadena. We don't have tanks there, but I can assure you that the Pasadena Police not only have a fax machine, they know how to use it, and they are fully capable of making arrests. Now, this was a show of force. Six or more officers, two or three hours of research, five hours to arrest, report, and book, the use of three city vehicles, gasoline, computer use, other equipment, all on taxpayer dime, to have a guy on a violation that might net $300. Never mind the picture that I had seen of this man who failed to disperse, shows him dispersing as fast as his two skinny little legs would run. This entire exercise was baseless, shows disregard not only for your city, that was a total waste of time and taxpayer money, but it also ignored the needs of your city. Are there no issues here in your city that require police intervention, that you would send them to Pasadena? Why are staff running around in another county to chase down a guy who sits on the lawn in City Hall and the police department every week? Why? And this city council doesn't believe that a citizens oversight committee has warranted it? Really?
Sir, you've had more than five minutes.
Sure, and I thank you for being so cordial and welcoming as to come over and introduce yourself and shake my hand, because you obviously knew I wasn't prepared, and I appreciate that.
I will thank you for your compliment.
Thank you.
We have the next speaker, please. It's only seven, five minutes.
Hi, my name's Stephen Baxter. I won't look at the chief, because I'm addressing you guys, but I'd really appreciate it if he didn't look away from me, because I'm not a bad person. There's lots of things I want to address here. The information that we need to decide if this was wise or not wasn't offered up earlier by the chief. We want to know specifically how many warrants the police department is working, or was working on the day that A.J. was arrested. Of those warrants, how many were felonies? Because I would imagine they would rise above A.J.'s charge, which is nonviolent, there is no victim in what he did, none. He filmed?
No.
Well, there is a victim, I'm sorry. This is the victim. Fat, bloated, slow cops. That's what he made them look like. And that's probably why they advocated so hard to the DA, that three months after the protest, he was charged, and two weeks after that, he was arrested. And by the way, whoever was assigned finding him, A.J.'s posting from a pool all the time. He kicks it at my house. I'm not a wallflower, you guys all know where I live, some of you have been to my house. There are pictures of him and the mayor, there are pictures of him shaking hands with J.D. DiCaprio. He was at the council meeting the week after the protest, after he was identified. It says so in this 170-page report I hope all of you read. And I'm gonna have five minutes. The reason you didn't arrest any of us before the verdict, I would really like if the mayor would ask the chief to look at me, because I'm not insulting him in any way, I'm not being disrespectful in any way, and I just find it rude. I don't think that's right. I don't think that's right. I let him into my gallery when he showed up, I was polite to him, this is just rude. Please, Mayor. All right, well, you all know what the new chief is like then, don't you? The reason the arrests came after the verdict is because this department has a new swagger. They feel vindicated, and they think we're all scumbags because we poked them when they were down. That's why. I get stuff from these guys all the time. That's what changed. It was payback. That's the difference. And A.J. in particular, the most lovable protester we have, is singled out because he outran eight cops. That's why. And the O.C. Weekly had photographs that went kind of viral, and they were embarrassed, and they just said, "Let's get him." So the information we're asking for is, how many felonies that day were bypassed? So the guy that used to work at Ren Fair gets captured in Pasadena. Six cops, four of them in uniform, three of them undercover, and an Amish dude on steroids busts this guy. Have you seen the picture of the guy with the big beard? He's everywhere. He busted cops and people here. Every time I see a beard, I think I'm going down. It's ridiculous. Okay. I'm offering up my services. I wanna be a liaison between the police department and the truth. That's what I would like. Pay me a dollar a year, that'll be my job, full-time. I work hard, lot of energy, do a lot of shit around this town. Let me have that job, because I don't hear any truth coming out of here. Okay? I want to know what it cost the taxpayer that day added up. The protest itself, from the report, shows forty-three officers on the ground. Forty-three officers. Okay? Then there's a whole bevy of captains, colonels, and whatevers in other places. In fact, one of the guys, the guy that supposedly added art on the side of the Police Department, I thought might cause us trouble at some point, and I wasn't sure what to do. And I wasn't gonna turn a vein or anything, but, you know, maybe ask advice. I go to the back of the City Hall where they're all hiding in alcoves, there's a captain there. I tell him who I am, he knows who I am. I ask if I can speak to him, he says, "No, I'm not speaking to you." And I'm sure that's on camera, I'm sure that's verifiable. I've called many people at City Hall, told them about it. Then later, he's used as justification for calling it unlawful assembly, you know? And A.J.'s charges are dispersing, failure to disperse, a riot. How do you define riots? Huh? Two taggers? And a hunch? Really?
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
Very liberal definition of riots.
How many more speakers do we have?
I don't have slips, but I'm guessing the line looks like we have at least four.
Okay. Please introduce yourself and we'd like your comments.
Good evening, my name is Nisha. I am speaking because I'm urging the council, and especially Councilman Whitaker, since she seems to be doing a little bit of research about this, to ask a few more questions. I did listen to what the police chief had to say, and what I found interesting is when he described what led to his decision to call when a felony dispersed, which was, it sounded like, you know, there were people in your, the community, I shouldn't say, who were not able to move through the streets and/or there was, I think, three instances of tagging he spoke of, and also a robbery which was not even connected to the protests at the time. Well, from what I understand, and of course, I could have my facts a little bit wrong, but felony dispersed requires a unlawful assembly call, and that felony, I mean, sorry, that unlawful assembly requires her to do violent action or in the California Penal Code. And nothing he described sounded like violent action to me at all. So I would question why that call was made when California Penal Code requires unlawful assembly to have either violence occurring or the immediate expectation of violence, which again, from what I've seen on the video streams, I didn't see that. So that's the first thing I would ask. The second thing I would ask is the police chief did say that, I think it was in the past year, there was six hundred, about six hundred incidents of both felony and non-felony slash misdemeanor occurrences where police officers from the Fullerton Department went outside their jurisdiction to apprehend people that had warrants. What I would ask of that is I would want to know how many officers were sent during this time? Because I'm wondering if there's certain instances where, you know, one person hears of someone and goes, "Oh, I'm gonna go slightly outside of my jurisdiction to bring up with one police car and pick someone up," or two police cars. Because when you talk about the cost, I think where people would be concerned is, you know, that's six officers of the law, plus vehicles, plus time, plus disguises apparently. And that's all a cost to taxpayer money. So that would be my question, where I don't doubt that the police officers have gone outside jurisdiction and done that, but I'm curious to know what is their per instance, especially in the misdemeanors, since that's the most comparable to what Mr. Redkey dealt with. What is the cost per instance? You know, what, what are we looking at? So was Mr. Redkey's arrest on the same level of these other six hundred instances that he, that the police chief brought up? That's what I'm looking at. Or was this an instance that was perhaps higher? Which is what my, my instinct, it sounds to me like that it went a bit overboard. And so that's, that's what I would ask. And honestly, if the Police Department is routinely sending six officers and police cars to apprehend what sounds like twelve hundred, over twelve hundred suspects per year, that seems very, a lot of money that you guys are budgeting for per instance to send out for people with open warrants. And I would encourage you to, as Councilman Whitaker said, you know, you guys are the ones that oversee the policy. Really look at the policy of is that, is that required for each instance to send out six detectives to apprehend someone? So that's, that's, those are the questions I had. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'd like to thank, five minutes, right? I'd like to thank Councilmember Whitaker to, for inviting us tonight to perform. And this is a sing-along, so I'd like to ask the mayor to ask the chief to sing along with us, please.
No, this is no comment, we don't do that.
Oh, yeah, we got it. What do you do with a dreadlock hippie? What do you do with a dreadlock hippie? What do you do with a dreadlock hippie early in the morning? Drive to Pasadena to arrest him. Drive to Pasadena to arrest him. Drive to Pasadena to arrest him early in the morning. Hey, hey, up we're rising. Hey, hey, up we're rising. Hey, hey, up we're rising early in the morning. All he ever did was film the police. All he ever did was film the police. All he ever did was film the police early in the morning. Hey, hey, up we're rising. Hey, hey, up we're rising. Hey, hey, up we're rising early in the morning. You wasted city dollars to arrest him. You wasted city dollars to arrest him. Wasted city dollars to arrest him early in the morning. Hey, hey, up we're rising. Hey, hey, up we're rising. Hey, hey, up we're rising early in the morning. There are violent offenders on the streets here. Violent offenders on the streets here. Violent offenders on the streets here early in the morning. Hey, hey, up we're rising. Hey, hey, up we're rising. Hey, hey, up we're rising early in the morning. You could've spent a month on the homeless. You could've spent the money on the homeless. You could've spent the money on the homeless early in the morning. What do you do with a dreadlock hippie? What do you do with a dreadlock hippie? What do you do with a dreadlock hippie early in the morning? Justice for Kelly Thomas. Justice for Kelly Thomas. Justice for Kelly Thomas early in the morning. Justice for Kelly Thomas. Justice for Kelly Thom. Justice for Kelly Thomas early in the morning. Justice for Kelly Thomas. Justice for Kelly Thom. Justice for Kelly Thomas early in the morning. Look, it was really stupid that you guys went from Fullerton to Pasadena with six cops and three cars to arrest this dude right here, who is obviously nonviolent, obviously comes to your city council all the time, is pictured having come to your city council numerous times since the protest, and he's all over the place. He's at Baxter's Pool. You could've gone to Baxter's Pool, it's a lot closer. Okay? So maybe this next time, don't waste so much money to arrest a nonviolent alleged misdemeanor for something that was just, he was just filming the police. He was just at the protest filming the police to make sure that they didn't beat anyone to death, like they beat Kelly Thomas to death on video for thirty-one minutes. Have you all seen that video? I want you all to see that video again, just one more time. Just watch it one more time. And think long and hard about who should be arrested. The police officers who beat Kelly Thomas to death or A.J. Redkey? Come on.
Also, I think with a little more respect for the people to come here and speak to you guys. I see you guys, you know, talking and looking down and mimicking people who are up here speaking and having a lot of disrespect. And I think that people take their time to come here, and, you know, this is what your jobs are for, to listen to people and respect them. And there's so much disrespect coming this way. It's something you should think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
A.J. Redkey, the city council.
Thank you, ma'am, if you have anything, please.
Hi, my name is Patty Beers. I'm not from your city, I'm a guest in your city. I was brought to your city because of injustice. And I'm here now. And your city because of more injustice. And I'm gonna keep coming back to your city until justice happens. And I have no faith, based on history, that justice is gonna happen in your city. And it's disgusting, and you should be disgusted with yourselves. So let me tell you what happened, what A.J. would have experienced if A.J. was apprehended with me. A.J. would have been in the jail under the care of your Fullerton Police, who you are responsible for, who you oversee. A.J. would have been in a van with me, eight other men and another woman, on our way to be transported from the care and custody of Fullerton Police to the Santa Ana, the Orange County Jail in Santa Ana. And A.J. would have heard a cop lean in and say, "Not guilty," and tease him. And A.J. would have heard a cop say to all of us in the van, "When you get to the county jail, there are twelve sheriffs waiting to smash your fucking faces in."
Kinks!
Next speaker, please.
The what? The what?
Good evening, Mayor Chafey, members of the council. My name is Manu Westley, I'm the Fullerton resident. And I'm here to address the issue of the arrest of Mr. Redkey.
Thank you.
And one of the questions I'd like to ask that was not asked of the chief is a question that a lot of people have in their minds and something that has been, that the department's accused of, is deliberately targeting for arrest and perhaps harassment of people who are video recording the actions of officers of the Police Department. I suspect the chief will say they are not, and I have no way of evaluating that whatsoever. I wasn't at the protest that sent the question. I wasn't in Pasadena. I think that the thing that's impressed me the most about the proceedings tonight is that if we had a civilian police commission with credibility and independence, you probably wouldn't be having to listen to this at 10:25 in the evening instead of being able to do the business of the people that you were elected to do. People who had concerns about the department's actions could take their concerns to an independent police commission and express those concerns. A police commission, a well-trained one, would be able to evaluate those concerns and get back to those people, and they would be able to brief the council and explain to the council what the procedures are. The chief would not have to come down here and explain the minutia of the department. They could say things like, "Well, it's generally the policy of the department to do this or that." And, you know, it would be something that would be, you know, the primary focus of his day, as it probably has become, I don't know. So I would really urge you to take up the matter once again of a civilian police commission for the city of Fullerton for the good of everyone, for the good of the department, the people they serve, the people here tonight. And if you're looking for that document, you can find it at the FullertonRAG.com. There is a document link up there for a proposal for a civilian police commission. And I would really request that you do that at some point in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. You have the next speaker, please.
I am very glad that I did not have to follow the song. So I know that it's very late, and I know that this type of topic is not easy to discuss, and it can be difficult and a bit raucous, but what I do want to say is that I don't think that it's a good use of public funds to send six officers to Pasadena to arrest someone for a nonviolent misdemeanor. Two of you up here are attorneys, two of you know what a nonviolent misdemeanor is. Petty theft, stealing a piece of gum, whatever it might be. This isn't what we should be spending our money on. And one of the things I want to leave you with, in the week prior to this incident, we had two incidents of arson. We had a structure fire on Orange Fork that was in Occupy building. Those people required a medical attention and emergency response. We had multiple incidents of arson at the Moncatollar, with property destruction. In the Moncatollar, we had a major earthquake that could have required massive amounts of evacuation and a massive response. In the year prior, we had two police pursuits that involved more than twenty officers. One that went through the Hut Branch Library, and one that finished the Cal State Fullerton. Those six officers that spent three hours getting to it from Pasadena each represented one life, or more than one life, for each of your constituents if there was an emergency in this city. It is inappropriate for them to be sent out of town on a nonviolent misdemeanor, and I urge each of you today to agendize who has the authority to make the decision to risk public safety to do nothing more than go to Pasadena for a scavenger hunt for a dry fox nest. Thank you.
Next speaker, please, this is for real.
It's just money. It's just a few officers, a few thousand dollars. It's actually not a big deal. But what is big deal? It's a vendetta. A vendetta by the police that know us, that know certain people that for whatever reason came forward and stood for, tried to get justice for, for the atrocities that have happened and continue and have happened for a long time. Those protests from back before they were charged, it turned those officers' lives upside down. It turned the DA's office upside down. Tony Rukakis had to put on a whole sham trial to let those guys off. It's serious. This was their little dig at some of the protesters to try to, you know, to try to mess their life up. My name's Adam Alder, I'm a third-generation Fullertonian. I was arrested that day after wild dispersing. And what Patty said was true. While we were in the Patty wagon, and Fullerton Police at night handcuffed, officer leans in, says, "Hey, I got two words for you, not guilty." I've said this here before. He laughed. Which really is just a big statement that the police have, have, have this issue, you know? Now, now they're not guilty. Now they can do whatever they want. Another one leans his head in right after that, says, "We're taking you to Orange County where there's twelve sheriffs to smash your fucking face in." It's gnarly, that's a threat. I walk down the street, I go here, I go to whatever, cop pulls in, I get that fever. I get that, oh shit, I'm not, I'm not safe. They beat Kelly's face in. They, they beat many people. I, I know firsthand, secondhand. And for you guys to think that you have control over the police station, you put Dan Hughes in. Dan Hughes worked for Chief Sellers. He worked for McKinley probably, if I remember. He worked for twenty years with all those people that have corrupt and covered up and beaten and over and over and over. Puts on a good face, he gets in, fine. It's outrageous. It's sad, that you wouldn't think. Some of you did actually, to bring in the sheriff, blah, blah, blah. Go get a guy, an application from Wyoming, someone completely different, to shake it up, to say, you know what? Don't put the old guard back in the gross nest. It, I, I have been personally beaten by the police. I have been... It's been, they, over the years, third generation, I have been growing up as a kid in these neighborhoods. I remember this one cop used to wait around the corner at night for my neighbor to ride home on his moped from work and harass him, pull him over, search him. Over and over and over through the years, it's the same thing. This is like, it's the same thing. It's the Nazi problem, it's the KG, it's, it's the too much power behind those badges and guns and those people that, that have an issue that become police. They have a lot of power. They have all complete power over all of you. There's nothing you guys have any power over them. What was that, Chafey?
Anything.
Oh, you did, there was something. You have no power over him. He has a ton of power over you. And all of his, his police, they write a report, they do a dance for the DA, it moves on, the problem goes away. It's a vendetta. It's, it's an issue with also the streaming. I don't know why they freak out when people are pointing cameras at them. Personally, that's what happened to me. I pointed a camera, they came at me. It was bizarre. I've seen it happen a lot. And what's the answer? He's quite justified and heavy in his position through, through everything. Awful lot of broken blood, and we're gonna go after him. You know, we can't only think about money, we have to think about what's going on, who's in control, what's, what's, what's their, they're, they're doing. I mean, yeah, it's a little bit rambling, but, but I have a sick feeling every time I see a cop. I have it right now. I see you, I see it, I see it, it's a, it's a monster inside the police. It's the same monster that's in the, the whole system.
Okay, thank you. Any other next speaker, please?
Council? My name's Brad, I'm with In League Press. Some of the things that we do as the press, with the new press, we, we livestream to the internet where we have an audience that follows us, and we go to places, we, we go to protests when families need help against, you know, a police, police that don't do anything about, you know, the cops that kill someone, or councils that won't listen. We try to come and we try to report on it, because, you know, the mainstream media doesn't. So that's what we do, that's what A.J. does. He's a reporter for In League Press. We, we were at the Fullerton, the protest, and for some reason, Dan calls a riot, and, and it's funny how he, he and it's funny how he, he says things like, "Oh, a robbery that happened, had nothing to do with the protest, so why do we mention it?" Except to put the word robbery in the same word as the protest so it can make it look like a little worse what happened. What happened is one guy spray painted it in and he said, "Well, they arrested him." And then a camera lady from Channel 2 hit a girl, an 18-year-old girl in the head with her camera, which she was going by, and she hit her back. Those are the only two things that really happened. Some roads might have gotten blocked, sure. But as far as violence goes, there any kind of reason to declare an unlawful assembly? There was none. Dan, Dan's been, he knows who we are. He's been, we've been here since the beginning. He stood out in front of the station and told me that I would, uh, once I saw the video of Kevin Thomas, I wouldn't feel the way I feel. I wouldn't be as upset about it. The whole time, and then the video came out and of course I was even more upset and wondered why he would even stand out there and tell me that and try to lighten up what happened. Also, he felt okay to put Kevin Craig, who was the commanding officer that night, that helped in that video kill Kelly and offered him no, no aid or anything. He made supervisor of the year. Not that same kid. That, that should be something that you're gonna all copy about Jeff or, you know, not, you know, people feeding your mind. But the fact that this killer was exonerated of any crime, he justified in court that they said, you know, and then he's supervisor of the year. It is true in here. If anybody wants to see, you can see Kevin Craig, Sergeant Kevin Craig, one of the Fullerton six. Two of the other ones are still working here, murdered. And they don't like the fact that we livestream them. They don't like the fact that we are upset that there's still three killers on your force. You know, that there's those three guys on, on the board. And so we, we livestream, we go where other people are scared to go. People are scared of the Fullerton police. With, with due reason. At that protest, I saw a rag cop pushing over people. A little handicapped girl that was limping and pushed her down or chasing people in wheelchairs around. They weren't keeping the peace, they were showing force. They're using all their new little militarization tools and their new L-RED cannon and their tank and everything and trying to say, "Oh, we're not guilty, we're not guilty of this and we'll do whatever we want." And AJ has been one of the people that, you know, and myself and In League Press and a lot of them, there were quite a few people that have been on their case since this happened for good reason. Killers got away with killing somebody on video in your city. So that's what Jan Flori, the man from Fullerton and not from Fullerton, somebody was murdered, a human being from, you know, the world. And I'm a human being in this world too. So I'll come to your city and I'll speak of it. So, you know, once they wasted all those resources to go to Pasadena to arrest, to arrest AJ for a non-violent, you know, he wants to also throw in, "Oh, domestic, domestic abuse is a non-violent." And that's obviously not the same thing, he knows it. And he knows it and he's sitting there lying to you. All right? And I've given Dan Hughes every chance in the world to come forward and do the right thing and he just seems to not want to do anything but sit on his hands and say, "Oh, well, I didn't do anything." So we're coming to you, you know? And we want to know who signed off on AJ's arrest. We want to know with that name, who signed up on that arrest to send those cops, like the other guy said, that, you know, it could have been somebody here in the media, the police, but instead they were all the way out in Pasadena making a statement that he's tired of us filming his station and talking and reporting. Basically, that's what it is, because we're the media. Now we're the new media and we report on his station. He doesn't like it. He doesn't like the way we say that he has three cops on there. You know, obviously he doesn't care because he made Kevin Craig supervisor of the year. I mean, really? Since Ken Hampton had to play football with everyone, like nothing happened. So I urge you guys to, to really look at this and look at Dan Hughes and what he's doing here and, and do the right thing. I have a whole bunch of stuff to say, but I'm not gonna say any other stuff. But, uh... Yeah, um... The people that stand against this injustice are the ones that are getting arrested. The cops, that I've got for you. Remember, you guys all have to live with yourselves when you come home. You've all seen that video. That's all I know, yeah. Watch it again.
Thank you. May I have the next speaker, please?
My name is Jean Thaxton. And the first thing I want to say to Jan Flori is, you were kind of a little bit insulted that people from outside of your city comes in and says things. You know what? We frequent your city all the time.
Let me respond to that. What my point was, was that, that you don't see the good things that happen.
Oh, we do see the good things that happen.
I don't know that.
Oh, no, we do.
I don't see you with...
Not interrupting the speaker.
I'll just have extra time.
This isn't a back-up, this is some public comment.
That's a counsel...
Not at the be...
...out of context. I wasn't...
Well, you're taking what we are saying out of context. We know all the good things about...
What you say about me, yes, I'll tell you.
Maybe you'll have a chance to, have a chance to respond. Have a chance to respond. Okay. Start anew. Give her five minutes. Okay, all right, go ahead.
I was at that protest too. And I left, before I left, I, I saw somebody spray painting on the police department wall and I, and, and I think this police probably would have been justified if they used spray paint, not chalk. They would have been justified to come out and send an officer out and arrest that person. But no, what did they do? They came out in riot gear. They came out en masse. I saw that. Now, there were some people that was blocked, that was out there, that was, was trying to impede the traffic, not block it, but impede it. But there was also a number of the good protesters out there pulling them back and saying, "Don't do this." Let those people through.
Like AJ.
They were doing it. They were pulling these people back. But the thing of it is, is I do believe it was a vendetta. I know, Chief Hughes, you says it wasn't, you said it wasn't. But I'm gonna tell you, AJ's arrest just happened to coincidentally happen the day before that Manny Ramos wanted to say that he was...
What's the word? Immune.
Had immunity, he wanted immunity. And also the, the day before, all the other protesters that were arrested, the day before their court date. I think it was a message to go to these people that was arrested for, for failure to disperse, failure to disperse. Which, they weren't rioting, these people weren't rioting. There was no riot. There was no riot. So are you, are we now not allowed? In the United States of America, our constitutional right? We're having these cities tell us that now we cannot protest? Peacefully protest? Now, the person that was spray painting, okay. You know, I'll, I'll give, I'll give you that. But not, how many police officers came out that day? That many for spray painting? That many for blocking a few vehicles? There weren't any cars turned over, no cars were burned, there was no trash car or cans burning. You remember the LA riots, you remember the riots? Now, that was, that was a riot. When they rioted around Rodney King and the other ones in the early 90s, that was a riot. We weren't rioting. We were peacefully protesting. And why were we peacefully protesting? Because we are tired of the arrogant, feral, bloodthirsty cops that are not fired, that are not gotten rid of. They don't, the police departments are not getting rid of them. Would you expect a principal or a board of, of, a, a, Board of Education to not fire a child molester? Would you expect them to cover up for them? Would you expect for them to help falsify their reports? We want the police department to be accountable. We want the chief to be accountable. We want the higher officers to be accountable. We want U-City council people to be accountable. It doesn't matter if I'm not a citizen of Fullerton. I'm a citizen of the United States. I'm a citizen of California. My son was murdered by a feral, bloodthirsty cop. And so was Kelly Thomas. And then the jury, you can't tell me that there was collusion. You can't tell me that there was collusion. I will always believe there was collusion in that trial because they didn't even come back and find those police officers guilty of excessive force. Now tell me what's right about that. Kelly Thomas's face was beat in. He was bruised and battered and broken bones and he was murdered. He died. Now, something's wrong with our system and you guys have a responsible job to try and make it right and keep it right. You need to audit your police department? You need to audit your police department? You need to make sure that you go out and, and catch these cops that are setting him wait for somebody. Do some better supervising instead of hiring more cops. Maybe you should hire more auditors, more, more handlers, more somebody to make sure the cops are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And put the cameras on them. Hold them accountable, but also show that they were justified, if they were justified. Put the cameras on them. And don't let them turn off their audios or if they don't wear the DARS or whatever they are, make sure they wear them. Or get them on them. Save your city some money. Stop paying for things that you shouldn't have to pay for because you have a police department that's following the rest of the corrupted police state across the United States. Do something, people.
I'm Terry Thaxton. That's my mom. I'm so proud. Um, you know, apparently it's all about the money dollar. Because Kelly Thomas's life didn't matter to the jurors who were sat on that jury or to the Fullerton Police Department or to some of you council members. So it all boils down to the dollar. Okay, so now we're talking about, okay, the city... Okay, cops not guilty after they killed Kelly. And you know what? It was a show of force. It was a show of force that day at the protest. I was there. And I feel like that Dan Hughes said that he determined it an unlawful assembly because, hey, they were tired of sitting around waiting for something to happen. Okay, we were out there for four, five, six hours and they figured they had enough. Okay, yeah, they nabbed a guy for chalking on the police department wall. And they nabbed a guy for spray painting downtown on a business. Okay, that's two people. That's all that happened. That's all that happened that day. And, yeah, I was one of those people on the street trying to get the traffic through. And, you know, for him to call an unlawful assembly, it was just a show of force. He just wanted to flex his muscles and say, "Okay, guys, it's enough." You know, "We've been standing around for five hours watching you guys through the windows, from the rooftops, you know, through our binoculars. We want to go home." And we didn't. And so he says unlawful assembly. "Okay, you guys need to go home now." But the livestreamers, I mean, they're diehards. I mean, I was tired. I was tired and hot and thirsty and hungry. And, you know, but these livestreamers, Patty and Adam and AJ, you know, God bless them. They didn't, they didn't stop. But Dan Hughes didn't want to hear it. He didn't want them there filming. He wanted him out of his city, deflect his muscles and his officers want to flex their muscles. So in the van, they told, you know, these, my friends, "You heard the quotes." And you know what? "May I suggest that you audit and ask for the recordings because don't they have DARS on them?" So maybe Mr. Whitaker or maybe Chief Hughes will turn over the recordings of those officers in the back of the paddy wagon or whatever you want to call it that day, since they were watching all the livestreaming, since they have officers sitting behind desks on computers watching all the livestreaming or auditing, you know, everything that happened that day. But did they listen to the DARS of those officers? Or are they just watching the livestreams? Okay, let's get both sides of the story here. So, so anyway, um... Yeah, it's about the dollar, isn't it? You know, your department spent thousands of dollars chasing down AJ. He's here at almost every city council meeting, but they had to go all the way to Pasadena. I mean, really, guys? So let, let's hold the police department accountable. Who do they, who do they answer to? They answer to Mr. Phelps? Or they answer to you guys?
Are there any more speakers after? I think you're the last speaker then. You'll be next. Okay, then you're the last speaker. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Juan Suleta. I'm also from another city in the state of California. I'm from Arcadia. I also was arrested that day. I want to recap the reasons why I actually was arrested. Your alleged unlawful assembly was declared by this officer over here, this man that defers public servant, because he's not. And it was done right here on Commonwealth and Highland. I, I want to speak to you folks that I was arrested by three undercover officers, two officers in, in actual uniform at Kelly's Corner. An hour and a half to two and a half hours after the alleged first dispersal order. I've never been arrested in my life. I don't have any precedence for being arrested. I was also recording. I was doing all these circumstances that allow me to be within my First Amendment, public grievances rights. But yet I was offended, I was attacked and assaulted and kidnapped by these officers in a location which was no longer within the dispersal order. Not only that, I was then harassed inside of a van, in the back of a van, because I had an anonymous mask and I was wearing a suit. I was in a full-fledged suit and I was tackled in a full-fledged suit because allegedly I was a flight risk as a misdemeanor 409, failure to disperse. And I, and I look at Jan Flori adamantly as I say all this because this is what the alleged people who get arrested in your town for not knowing what the benefits of your town are and for not partaking in the good deeds that this town allegedly has to procure for its citizens, has to offer. Because I partake in both the good things and allegedly I have now partaken in the bad things that your city has to offer. When I was then arrested by these officers, as I had this mask on, I was choked by undercover officer Thayer, which is the officer that we're describing as the man with the beard, and told to shut the fuck up because there was no reason for me to speak. As I was telling him, "Would you do this to your son or daughter? Would you allow an injustice to your son and daughter where someone beat them to death?" And I would look at Dan Hughes, but it would be a waste of my space. Because just like the Jews said to Hitler, "You can't have a conscientious objection to an unconscientious person." For me personally, I came to this city because there was an injustice. Because for me, I think to myself, as being a dual citizen of this country and also of another country, that this country allegedly procures the rights and freedoms of its individuals. But it doesn't. All it does is it propounds the profit dollars and then it allows the security apparatus that we call Dan Hughes to then trample on the citizens as long as it allegedly procures the order that allows you to maintain money. Let's look at the reality of why the actual dispersal order came down after the five or six hours of actual protest. Your bustling town was going to be afflicted by the fact that you weren't going to be able to make money on that Saturday night. Was, was that a concern of the citizens? Or was that a concern of this private security apparatus that would like to procure your city's main's money rather than you see its citizens speak for themselves and have other grievances? I was arrested, choked and messed with by these cops. And then, on top of that, what my partner said right here, allegedly about what you folks did or what these officers did upon your supervision, they're your children. You look over them. But no, what they did is then after being choked, after me being peaceful, calm with them, after them not having anything to say about how I was violent or even how I didn't disperse because I was six blocks away to the west and also to the south, one block. So, so I, I, I ask all of you folks that are allegedly the accountability for the city and especially you, Jan Flori, because you allege that all these people that come here are foreigners and don't know how to partake in your city and what you would call the consensus and the populace and the common good. What are you doing to procure the common good? What are you doing to make sure that this gentleman right here, who is not a public servant, becomes a public servant? And what are the rest of you doing? And what are you going to do so injustices like this don't continue to happen? You're not legitimate because you hold an office. You're legitimate because you procure the rights of the citizens for which you are held in office by and for. Let's not be the unconscientious objectors that let many people die, that let Kelly Thomas go free. Let's observe how people chit-chat on the side of this very important topic as if it didn't matter. As if it was just the hair that they don't have on top of their head.
Joan Briano, Fullerton resident, parent of four children. I stated at a previous meeting that my mother-in-law is from North Korea. I stated at a previous meeting that my mother-in-law is from North Korea, and she left that country with the shirt on her back overnight, when it took literally days, if not weeks, to walk across the land that their family had procured through the generations. My father is from Italy. His family lived in a small farmhouse in the mountains of northern Italy, and almost lost his brother when the troops came through during the war, and Mussolini decided to have his way with all their provisions for the winter that almost left him for dead. I look my kids in the eyes every night when I go to bed, and I pray with them. And we are a very civically-minded family. We go to church. I try to instill in these children that this is the last bastion and freedom on the planet. And that when I decided to put roots down in this town some thirteen or fourteen years ago, I was going to put them deep. And I've done so. But much to my consternation, if not my horror, my first interaction with the Fullerton Police Department about...